Thank you for joining with us on TV 6. If you happen to be watching on Facebook. Hank, were we on Facebook this evening too? Very good. If you're watching us on Facebook, welcome. We're so glad you're with us this evening. We'll start, once again, with our roll call by having our council members introduce themselves, starting to my right.
I'm Jane Welch. Good evening.
Hey, I'm David Smitherman. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Foster.
And I'm Mike Horn.
Melissa Hunt, happy Thursday.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
I asked David where he got his shirt tonight, and he said, "A little here and a little there." So I'm guessing that may be... But you're very colorful, David. Thank you for putting some color on the podium tonight.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will be led now by our town attorney, Beau Howf, in our invocation, following which council member Jane Welch will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, if you're able, stand and join us.
Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that we have here. We ask your protection upon those who are dealing with the tropical storm, and we ask that you keep them safe. We also keep in mind, at this point in time, the families of those lost in the building collapse in Surfside, Florida. Please keep those people under your comforting care and your arm of protection as they go through the months and days ahead. We ask you now to bless the time that we have together during this meeting, to act with wisdom and courage, and do the things that this town wants to be done, and we ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We also have with us this evening our absolutely amazing town staff, our manager Hank Perkins, Beau Howf, thank you very much for that invocation, our sergeant in charge of our community policing, Sergeant PJ Stringer, our community planning director... Is that right? Community planning director? Or planning director? I'll just add a "community" to it. Stacy Talbrough, intern Hannah... And I'm sorry, Hannah, I can't remember your last name.
Hannah Edwards.
Hannah Edwards. That's really hard to remember.
Eder.
Eder, okay. No wonder I got it wrong. Hannah, your summer going okay with us? Very good. We're glad to have you. Our town public works director Ryan Moser, our town clerk Joyce Walker, and our town finance director, Ms. Pam Orell. So all of you, thank you for the work that you do, and it's good to see everybody back together and everybody in the right places, and it's just starting to feel right again. Hank, will you take... Lead us through our consent agenda, please.
Mayor, I think we need to adopt the agenda first.
You want me to adopt the agenda first?
That would be helpful.
You know, I'm glad Mr. Franklin is sitting down there at the end because he always reminds me when I get off track. Very good. Councilmembers, we have not had any changes since we sent out the agenda. Have we, Ms. Walker? Ms. Foster wants to add something.
Nope. I would just like to make a request to remove something on the consent agenda, but I was going to do that when it comes up, so...
Okay, very good. With that, council members, we're going to take a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So move.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Walker, I understand you have, by word of mouth, Ms. Walker, has said Ms. Foster has something she'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
John, thank you, Mayor. Just item 10, approval of town council minutes, June 10th, 2021. I'm requesting that those be pulled, and I have a few edits for Joyce for next time, and if we could bring those forward in August. That's my request of the group.
Council members, any objection with removing that consent agenda? All right. With that, Hank, if you'll lead us through it, please.
Okay. Thank you. We have Resolution 2021-050, acceptance and approval of monthly financials for the 10 months ending May 31st, 2021. Approval of town council briefing minutes from May 6th, 2021. Approval of town council closed session minutes from May 6th, 2021. Approval of town council budget meeting number three minutes from May 10th, 2021. Approval of town council closed session minutes from May 10th, 2021. Approval of town council meeting minutes from May 13th, 2021. Approval of town council minutes... Meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2021. Approval of town council closed session minutes from June 3rd, 2021. Approval of town council budget meeting minutes, June 3rd, 2021. And lastly, approval of town council meeting minutes from June 14th, 2021.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that generally come before the council on a routine basis. There are previous minutes in our financial reports. I always ask Ms. Orell the question, are we in good financial shape? So council members, with the exception of item 10, may we have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So move.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, or Ms. Foster makes the motion?
Welch.
Ms. Foster did.
Second.
And Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Well, we have a couple of introductions and presentations to make tonight, and I will try to be a good storyteller as I go through this next one, so bear with me. We're going to recognize our Sergeant PJ Stringer for a notorious act here recently. As I lay out the story, or as the story's been presented to me, the sheriff's department received a call from a young woman who said that her boyfriend had intentions to harm himself, that he was a heroin addict, and that he had previously discussed committing suicide. During their conversation, before they hung up, she heard a shot, so she was afraid that he had already killed himself. So she called 911, and deputies arrived at his residence. He was not there, and he was not located inside. His girlfriend arrived shortly after that and gave the deputies his vehicle information, and so they were able to do a description, plus they also circulated the triangulation, I guess is what they call it, by cell phone towers, and were able to kind of pinpoint where he was. While the rest of the deputies continued to take a look at the residence, Sergeant Stringer just happened to pull in a restaurant parking lot that was near the location and saw the car that had been described. He approached the driver's window. He saw the subject... I always love how the police say "the subject." He saw the individual texting a message. The window was down, Sergeant Stringer began speaking to him. The subject told Sergeant Stringer that he was planning to end his life. Sergeant Stringer asked him if he had a gun, and he said, "Yes, I have a gun." Sergeant Stringer said, "Where is it?" He said, "It's sitting right here in the driver's compartment beside me." At that point, Sergeant Stringer decided he would take matters in his own hands, literally, and reached in and took a hold of this individual's arms, pulled him out of the window, and held him. And shortly after that, the other deputies were able to arrive, and they were able to assist in that, we'll call it rescue. I'm assuming that's what we'll call it. They did check the automobile, and sure enough, there was a loaded .45 caliber pistol within the individual's reach, very easily within the individual's reach. The real interesting thing about this is that the individual had stopped to send one final text message. Otherwise, we would have been a little too late. So we caught him in the act of texting. Sergeant Stringer knew what to do. He approached the car. He kept a calm voice. He knew exactly how to take control of the situation. For that, he is being recognized by the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office as Staff Member of the Month for his service and commitment to the county. Congratulations, PJ. Just in the line of duty, right? Absolutely. PJ, you also have a report for us this evening.
Thank you all for that. I appreciate it, but it's nothing anybody wearing this uniform or this badge would not do in that situation. This happened to be at the right place at the right time, so... Our monthly stats for this month, for May, come in at 727 total calls for service. That's compared to 258 for last year at this time. Seen quite a bit of increase. The security checks also went up. That was 387 as compared to 274 last year, and traffic violations were at 53 versus 15. So you can see things are steadily on the increase as people... Restrictions are lifted and things get back to normal. 14 alarms, that's down quite a bit from last month, and even in 2020, we were at 35 versus that last year. And still averaging about a five minutes response time for your priority calls, and actually, you know, we want to keep that. We want to be safe as we're responding, and so things are starting to get back to normal. I'm glad to be back in front of the council and glad that we can be meeting together, so it is a good sign. I've also put together just a brief presentation for this month's traffic safety alert, I guess you would say, or something for the newsletter. It was suggested by one of the council members for an idea, so I put together a topic that I think's kind of... Got mixed feelings about it, so we're going to talk briefly about roundabouts. So, like them or not, they work.
Oh, yeah.
They really do. So some interesting statistics that I pulled off of the North Carolina DOT. They put 13 intersections with 55 mile-an-hour zones. So just to give you an idea, that would be somewhere like an area of like Conrad Road at Grapevine, okay? So you think about a 55 mile-an-hour zone on a back road and where they have an intersection, and they replaced 13 of those across the state with roundabouts, and the data that they collected, crashes were down 41 percent, okay? Fatal crashes were down 79 percent, and your fatal or your front-end impact crashes, like your head-on crashes, were at 62 percent. So the state decided, okay, now we're going to do 30 roundabouts, and these were put out at various locations across North Carolina, and even more roundabouts, so the total crashes went down 46 percent. Fatal crashes were at 76 percent, and your head-on crashes were down to 75 percent. So, like it or not, they do work, what they're designed, but I just wanted to touch on a couple key factors, some safety things that we could do to try to make the motor in public or make everybody's life a little easier. First, the DOT reminds, or Department of Transportation, give extra room when you're entering these roundabouts. These big trucks have no choice but to go around it. So if you pull right up to what we refer to as the breakdown strip or the brake stop bar as you're entering the traffic circle, if you see a truck coming, give them a little extra room so they can come through there, because they're going to have to use that concrete median to take every bit of that to circulate. Never enter a roundabout while an emergency vehicle is coming up behind you. If you're already into the roundabout, just go ahead and continue through it. Give the fire truck, ambulance, whatever the case may be, give them a little bit of room to exit, or for y'all to exit, the motor in public to exit, and pull over to the right as you normally would do, and let them come through. A fire truck will never be able to pass inside of a roundabout, okay? It's just, they can't do it. And here's one that's going to touch a little bit of everybody. Driver should never pass a bicyclist in a roundabout, okay? And we can see, you know, we have tons of bicyclists in Lewisville, so, you know, they're treated just like a car road. They're supposed to obey the traffic signs, whether it be stop signs or stoplights, and I know everybody gets aggravated in the large groups, but, you know, they have a right, we have to share the road. And then always yield to your pedestrians as they're entering the roundabout, so they still have that. And that's important as we have big events here in town, and people park and walk up and down the sidewalk, so you see walkers or joggers. So just some little things that we can do, but there's the statistics, so they're designed and they do work, so... Everybody has a hard time, and bless her heart, I love her, my mom, she's one of the world's worst. She says, "The roundabout throwed me." So, you know, when your GPS says, "Take the third right," that confuses everybody, but they are sufficient, so... It's good to see y'all back, and I'm going to send that out, and hopefully we'll put that information in the news article in some form, and maybe lighten people and help them to get through the roundabouts a little easier. Thank you all.
Thank you, PJ. Counsel, any questions for PJ this evening?
PJ, one other thing is that roundabouts reduce air pollution, and I don't know exactly what the number is, but it's close to 50 percent because you no longer have cars sitting and idling. So there's another benefit for the environment there.
Yep. Okay. There's the stats that are pulled up there, if you want to see how they compare. Really not a huge... Anything like car break-ins or anything like that, so they've... The guys have investigated, trying to do some follow-up cases. We did have some assist agencies, whether that be the fire department or EMS, so we did have several of those.
Very good. Any questions?
No, I was just going to also add with the roundabouts, they're much more attractive than a light hanging there. This sometimes can go out as well, so...
I think the whole purpose of it is that T-intersection of people pulling out, and it does, if people utilize them correctly, and that free flow in traffic. Once you're in the roundabout, whoever is in the roundabout actually has the right-of-way, so the people that's waiting to enter, that's the ones that are supposed to be yielding.
PJ, I've got a question as a pedestrian. So when we're walking, I'm assuming you want us, from a safety standpoint, to just go to the middle part of the roundabout, hang there, assess, and then move to the next point?
They should be marked, yes ma'am, but obviously, treat it like any other, you know, just because you step out doesn't mean that somebody's going to stop, so absolutely. Just try to make sure that it's safely, and don't hang out in the middle of the roundabout. Try to get to the other side, to the sidewalk, whenever you can.
Thanks.
Very good. Thanks, PJ. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first opportunity tonight for you to participate in our public forum. This is our opportunity to hear what's on your mind, your thoughts, and you can share them with the council. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the council this evening? I see nobody leaping up to approach the microphone, so we'll go ahead and pass through the public forum. If you wish to submit comments, you can do so. Submit them to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. We'd love to hear from you. We're down to our public hearing of the evening, and Stacy, would you like to give us a little primer on this, please?
Yes. Joyce, if you could bring up... I've just prepared a little... With Hannah's help, prepared a little PowerPoint for you guys.
You got that one.
Yeah, you can do start slideshow at the top. Thank you. So this... Is it up here?
No, you'll have to drive.
Yeah, I think... Yeah, oh, okay. So this is UDO text amendment, UDO-L 164. We have talked about this numerous times, and it's kind of been looming over us for quite some time for the new North Carolina General Statute 160D. So this text amendment was drafted by staff in response to the mandated... You can use your arrow on the keyboard, Joyce.
No, it's not. Oh.
Okay. So it was drafted by staff in response to the mandates that we're required to do for 160D. In the staff report, you would notice that we used to refer, for planning and zoning, we still refer to 160A for some things, but for planning and zoning, we used to refer to 160A. Now, all of that has been consolidated. The municipalities and towns would refer to 160A. County jurisdictions would go to 153A. So for planning and zoning, all of that has been consolidated into what we call now 160D. That is the North Carolina General Statute chapter that we look for when we have questions or things that we have to go to for 160D that mandates us for all planning and zoning regulations. So this is... Allows us to be in compliance with the state. All of these changes are required by the state of North Carolina, by state law, and there are no additional changes in the text. Everything that you see before you is everything that comes from 160D. There's not anything else that we've added into this text amendment or anything like that. Joyce? So the chapters, actually, every chapter for 160D is touched throughout our Unified Development Ordinance for a lot of numerous different reasons. So the definitions ordinance, zoning ordinance, environmental ordinance, subdivision regulations, and then the appendix section, all of those different chapters, everything in the ordinance, in some way or another has been touched by 160D. So what I'd like to do is just go through some of those highlights for you tonight, so you can kind of get an idea. It's a very large text amendment because of all the changes, but there's some highlights that I want to touch on, just to give you an overview of the different things that we changed. Go ahead, Joyce. So the first one is all references to 160A have been changed to 160D for compliance. Vested right regulations, that is when someone has a vested right to continue their development or something like that in our ordinance, has been changed. Some of those things changed for 160D. All of those have been updated. The big thing for the town of Lewisville is all the references to special use districts is now going to be conditional district terminology. What this means is every... The process that we go through when we do a rezoning, like PBS or IPS, or, you know, a zoning district with an S at the end of it, that's a special use district, or what we used to call a special use district. That's when you see a site plan before you. There might be some conditions added to that. Well, all of that terminology for the entire state is being changed to conditional district, but the process that we use for that stays the same. It's just we call it something different now. So in the ordinance, you'll see that that special use is now... The terminology is changed to conditional district, and the S's that you see in the ordinance will be changed to Cs for, obviously, conditional instead of special. Split jurisdiction language is reflected. If ever we had a parcel that was split by town jurisdiction or county jurisdiction, there are specific statutory requirements that we have to go by now. That gives the property owner the choice of which jurisdiction they want to fall under, and then, say for instance, if they wanted to fall under the county, it would be up to the town to kind of say, "Okay, we're okay with that. You can fall under the town," or vice versa. So it just kind of gives the property owner a little bit more leeway if they have split jurisdiction. And then another, back to the conditional district, the table of permitted uses has been updated to reflect that as well. One of the major definitions changes that we had was for family care home. The use and terminology had changed, so that's been updated, as well as the table of permitted uses, the parking regulation requirements, all of that terminology has been updated for the UDO. For granting variances, this is not something that you guys deal with. This is something that the Zoning Board of Adjustment deals with, but there are four findings that they have to find in order to grant a variance. Those have been updated, so we now go by what's new from the state for 160D. Conflict of interest standards were added for elected bodies and appointed boards and committees, so you'll see that. It talks about... There's even some that was added by the state for staff. If you have a conflict of interest for a case that's coming before us, we now have specific regulations of what we should do in those instances for those types of cases that come before us if someone does have a conflict of interest. Standards for the submission of written comments were added. That is just to be consistent with the statutory language that we have to follow. And the last one that you see on this slide is protest petitions. This is something that's not necessarily specific to 160D, but it is specific to legislation. This is something that I noticed in the Lewisville UDO that should have changed. Our text should have changed years ago because the legislation for this changed years ago, so that's just an update to still be compliant with general statutes. Next one, Joyce? Okay, so staff changes were updated. You'll know sometimes, I think I've come, I don't know, to this council, but to council before, about specifics and clarifications on what we consider staff changes or minor changes and what we don't. That's been updated to reflect in our UDO for 160D. The procedures for UDO text amendments, that was not in our ordinance, that has been added. There are... The next one, the definition for exempt subdivisions, has been updated to match 160D, but there are also, in our ordinance, there used to be three types of subdivisions: exempt or recombination subdivisions, minor and major. Well, now the state has added expedited review subdivisions, so that's something, that language that we have added in order to be compliant. And then lastly, there's certain definitions in our ordinance that we have updated that come straight from 160D. Some have been updated if we already had them, and then if we did not have them, we added those definitions into 160D. So lastly, at the June 23rd meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of these text amendment changes to the council, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy? Yes, ma'am.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to you and to Hannah. Just having that executive summary is perfect. It's wonderful and very much appreciated. Thanks, you guys. I think my questions are going to go pretty quickly. For example, you already hit the protest petition piece, so that's done, but I do have a handful, so if you don't mind... Yeah, can I just hit that? You were talking about the four findings mainly applicable to ZBOA. Will planning board and council be impacted with PRDs with the four findings, or is that strictly ZBOA?
That is strictly ZBOA for variances.
Okay.
The findings for special use permits, which you guys touch, are not affected by 160D.
Okay. So conflict of interest, I hear that, or I see that that's a big thematic. How will we operationalize that? What's the expectation in terms of procedurally, having people report out that, "I have a conflict," for example?
Essentially, it will be the same, but it adds just clarity of what and that conflict could be.
Okay.
It gives specific language in the ordinance now as to what that would be, close family or business relation or something like that. It just clarifies all that and kind of puts it in black and white in our ordinance, so... But the procedure that we do will stay the same, as far as if you have a conflict, stating that at that meeting and so forth will be the same.
So it's incumbent upon the individual to know that and to bring that up, as opposed to the board or the staff liaison or the attorney somehow maybe mentioning that in advance?
You know, as always, if you have a question about whether or not a particular situation gives rise to a potential conflict of interest, then as early as you know that that may be the case, if you'll let me know, I'll take a look at it to make sure and either advise you that it is and therefore you need to have yourself excused, or that it's not. And then, of course, as we've talked about before, we go a little bit of the extra mile here in Lewisville, and even in situations where there may not be a technical conflict of interest, a lot of times you may want to mention, "Listen, I know this is not a technical conflict of interest. I'm not going to stand down. I'm required to vote," because you know when you don't have a conflict, you can't get excused. But if you feel as though something is close to a conflict, you may want to simply let the public know by making an announcement. "Please be aware, I know this person," or whatever, and even though that may not be a conflict, at least it's out in the air and the sunshine becomes the disinfectant, as we say.
Okay. But in essence, like you're saying, the procedures that we're currently using don't change.
Procedures don't change, and there's been just very minor change in language about what constitutes a conflict.
Okay. Okay. What is an... Why did they add the expedited review subdivision? I'm curious.
Hold on one second. I want to get the exact language for you so I don't...
It's more sort of like, where was the legislature coming from on this?
Yeah. An expedited subdivision is one that shall be reviewed and approved in the same manner as exempt subdivisions, and then it gives some different scenarios that would qualify for that. The tract of parcel to be divided is or was not exempt according to the definition of a subdivision. No part of the tract or parcel has been divided under this subsection in the past 10 years. Entire area of the tract or parcel to be divided is greater than five acres. After division, no more than three lots result from the division. After division, all resultant lots must comply with lot division requirements for zoning, the use of the lots for zoning, and then permanent means of ingress and egress is recorded for each lot, either they have frontage or private access easement. So essentially, it's just almost the same as a minor subdivision.
Yeah.
It's just if it's, you know, meets one of those criteria, three lots or less, five acres, then it's kind of on the side of, well, one shouldn't be taking 10 to 15 days to review this.
Okay.
You know, an exempt subdivision, it's something that's... I mean, there's some qualifications there, too, but essentially, the big ordeal is that it doesn't create a new lot, that would be a recombination, or if it's greater than 10 acres and the residual is greater than 10 acres, then that's when you're not looking for necessarily subdivision regulations. Exempt, that's why they call it... Exempt, that's why they call it exempt subdivision, but you are looking for it as a review officer for recordation requirements. But so, so it just, it just kind of throws a little bit extra in there, so it's not completely minor, but it is a little bit more than just an exempt subdivision.
Okay. So on page 40 and 33, and the protest petition, I think was part of this as well, there's a TIA or the Traffic Impact Study, and there was a DTO notice requirement, and both of those were just Xed Out Completely.
Mm-hmm.
Was that because the state was saying to us, you need to get rid of that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. If it's Xed Out Completely, then that was taken out in 160D, those provisions.
Just again, curiosity about the traffic impact study, I just was...
I think we can...
Any insight?
We can still, in certain circumstances, require one.
Yeah.
But I think that the way we require one now is a little bit different for 160D.
And I think the last, last thing, the others were just a couple of typos. So the state of government, when I was doing my homework, like you said, Stacy, we've been looking at this for a while, it's a big, big document. The School of Government had this cool little checklist, I'm sure you guys probably saw it, where it had definitions of, these are the things you must do, here are the things that you need to be aware of, and then here are the things that you may do. Again, you guys know this, I'm saying mainly this for the, for the audience at home, perhaps. Were there, are there items that we may want to do going forward, whether, where it comes up next month with some of the governance discussions? We can always come back and add to this with additional text amendments, correct?
Absolutely.
At any time?
Yes, yes. What Bo and I, in the conversations that we have, we are getting ready to do, you know, we got approved in the budget to do a UDO rewrite, and so that would be a great time to do some of those may's. The reason we wanted, obviously, to go ahead with the musts is so that we're in compliance with state regulations.
Perfect. And 3-1.4 in the document says, it's a little typo under authority.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
If reading through it, if anybody finds any other ones, please let me know. It's a big document to get through.
Yeah, looks great.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Council members, any other questions? For Stacy? Okay, very good. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in support or in opposition to? Anybody here speak in opposition or in support of this particular change to our UDO? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel discussion? There's no discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes a second. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Stacy, Hannah?
Yes.
Again, thank you and the planning board for great work on this. I know it's like very tedious going through the many pages and trying to sort all this stuff out. Great job, though.
And Bo.
We do have some items of unfinished business. Hank, you want to take us through the first one?
Yes. Let's see. At your stations, you should have two versions of chapter 17. One has the highlights and one is a cleaned up version. We covered this in our last, last month's meeting, quite in depth, and then last week, we kind of reviewed what we had changed in here and went over the highlights as well. There was one question at the end of that review next, last week, and that was on page number five, and that was towards the bottom, under C, permitted concealment or enclosure of a junk motor vehicle. There was some question about some awkward language. We did find out in there that the word "the" had been left out, and that has been included and corrected in your version, so now it says, instead of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, the town manager or his or her designee has been crossed out, it just says "the," authorized official of the town pursuant to 17-4. So with that, this version of 17 is, has been reviewed with council and is ready for your consideration of adoption this evening, through consideration of, gosh, it's ordinance numbers now.
202-1022?
That's right, that's correct.
Council members, any questions for Hank? Not want to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Stacy?
I'm going to start getting used to this again, one of these days. Okay, if you recall back in June, I brought a request before you to modify a previously approved site plan. The site plan was LPBR 202001 for Lewisville Place, Section 5. The request came from the engineer and developer of that subdivision, if you recall, was a seven lot subdivision, and because of some stormwater constraints, they wanted to, what they're wanting to do is withdraw one of those lots to make it a six lot subdivision. And I just wanted to give you a little more background on kind of where that comes from and the reason they're having some constraints, so...
Excuse me, is this the one off Kellwin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. So some municipalities in Forsyth County follow the state regulations. The state regulations, Clemmons being one, the city of Winston-Salem being one, specifically say that you have a low-density definition, which would be projects that are permitted for stormwater as low-density if the project contains no more than 24% built-upon area or no more than two dwelling units per acre. And then they have a definition for high-density projects. So their definition of high-density projects is anything above and beyond or over what would be considered a low-density project. That's what the state regulation defines it as, that's what Clemmons, Winston, and others that follow the state regulations. Lewisville's a little bit different. The way that our ordinance was written, it was written, the definition for low-density is the same, but our definition for a high-density project is any project that exceeds the low-density threshold for dwelling units per acre or built-upon area, not and built-upon area. And then two, it doesn't say, I mean, it doesn't stop with anything that's over the low-density threshold. And so that's what puts this project kind of in limbo, because they meet the definition for low-density, but because of the two dwelling units per acre, it also, it throws them into high-density because of the way our definitions read. Our definition is different than what the state requires. So for this, for this standard, the, what I'm reading from is some conversations that I've had with the engineer, Alex Carter, he's with Beeson Engineering is who is on this project. So Lewisville's high-density definition has an "or," which provides the opportunity for a project to meet both the low and high-density definition. The site will meet the low-density definition for the state, for other municipalities, it's just for Lewisville, because we have that "or" in there, and it's different, it, like I said, throws it in a little bit of limbo. So the calculations for density will not change from the original major subdivision and the proposed minor subdivision lot and modified subdivision. The issue is not the calculations, it's the actual definition. So the calculations meet low-density, but the definition for Lewisville is what would throw this small seven-lot subdivision into high-density requiring a stormwater pond. So the site plan was drawn, expected to meet low-density standards. It is approximately 18% built-upon area, that will not change. The 18%, whether they have the seven lot included or just six lots included, that 18% built-upon area does not change. So they still technically meet the definition for a low-density project because they're under the 24% built-upon area. So the proposed change is to present the same 3.3 acres in a minor subdivision, so the one lot would be a minor subdivision, the lot that would be removed from, I know this gets a little bit confusing, but the lot seven that fronts Lewisville-Clemmons Road will be removed from the major subdivision, making it only 3.02 acres left for the six lots off of Kellwin Lane, at the terminus of Kellwin Lane. And so that proposal will still meet Lewisville's UDO requirements. It's still under the low-density requirements and meets the threshold of a low-density project so that they would not have to put in a, you know, very costly, very maintenance intensive stormwater pond right in the middle of these few houses. So that, that is why they're asking for that lot to be withdrawn, not necessarily to, you know, not build the home, but because our definition is different than what the state requires, is why it throws it into that high-density. Does that make sense to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
We happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
So are they going to build a house on the lot they're removing that will face Lewisville-Clemmons?
Yes, mm-hmm.
It just will not be included in the subdivision?
The major subdivision, correct.
Okay.
And that in itself is what, like I said, it doesn't change the built-upon area, it's still 18%, whether that, it's a six lot major subdivision or a seven lot major subdivision, it's just, it lets them kind of not be bound by our different definition than other people generally have. Yes.
Stacy, I've got a question, maybe it's Bo or Joyce, because it's more of an historic perspective. Do you have any insight as to why we would have put the language in there that was "or," or the intent was for that, because, just because Winston, Clemmons, et cetera, has it? I mean, Lewisville is special and unique, and maybe there was a rationale behind that. So any insight anyone has on that?
Just my recollection is that we did it in this instance, and we did it in the other, one other, oh, one of the areas, oversized accessory dwelling, I mean, oversized accessory building requirements. We have, for the rest of the county, has a threshold, 5% of the lot size or a certain square footage, and most of the things is, most of the other municipalities and counties, whichever is greater, and Lewisville, we said whichever is less. So we made more stringent requirements. And then they don't, they're not outlawed, they just simply require you to kind of get a special use permit. So I know that that's one of those, and I think as we were going through all of the UDO way back in '95? Yes, it was? Well, way, way back when we adopted the UDO and took over, this was one of the other ones, and it was during the stormwater, obviously during the stormwater discussion. That's my best recollection of it, and it's not a very good one, but, but, you know, had they come in with the six lots initially, they would have been, we wouldn't be having these questions. You would have had a minor subdivision approved.
Right.
And this one, so it's not an attempt to escape regulations.
I would go as far as to say too, that any time that we have a low-density project, it would never be able to be considered a low-density project the way our definition is written. So any time that you have a major subdivision or something that has to go through stormwater review, it's going to require a stormwater pond every single time, which is, which is very burdensome and very expensive and, and very, you know, labor and maintenance intensive, whenever the way the definition is written.
And that may be the subject of a text amendment down the line, now that we've got 160D out of the way. I don't think this is one that would get in the way of...
Yeah.
...the consideration of the new UDO.
Yeah.
House members? Any other questions? Very good. Want to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Smithman makes a motion?
Second.
Makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Stace, great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Moser, you want some money from us?
We talked about this at the briefing, so we have two budget amendments for you tonight. The first being ordinance 2021034, amending budget ordinance 2021001, and the amount of $1,800 to remove a dead tree from the Moser property on Lewisville-Viana Road.
Any questions for Ryan?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Frankel makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Number two, Ryan.
Second one's ordinance 2021035, amending budget ordinance 2021001, and the amount of $3,000 to budget for the installation and cost of installing warning lights for the new Toyota 400.
Very good. Any questions for Ryan? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Foster makes the motion? Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ryan. Joyce?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We received a request from the Shallow Ford Foundation to be added to our exempt list of organizations that are 501(c)(3), and I believe we talked about this at the briefing, and I've prepared the ordinance that will add this to our town code.
Very good. Council members, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Frankel makes the motion?
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous also. Hank? Administrative reports, please.
Okay, we've got a couple of things, we're actually, let me get over the easy first, the quick, down and dirty fat first, and then we'll get into a discussion that is a continuation of last week. I do want to make sure everybody in the public is aware that July 1, we did open up Town Hall and our town facilities, and we've made our facilities now open for rental as well. These are the pavilions at the parks, as well as the community center, and along with that, we've opened up the senior exercise room. Those users that have the senior exercise room, if they want to contact Stacy Howard and get new numbers, they can have access to that as well. But I'd like to make that official for everybody who is listening to the meeting this evening. Second, I want to remind everyone that we are opening the bids for the Gateway Project. This is our project on Williams Road between the Shallowford-Williams Road roundabout down and across the bridge, and currently, the bid, the re-advertising has been done on this with, and the bid opening will be at 10:00 in the morning on July 27, and so we're hoping that we end up having some good bids come out of that as well. Lastly, we talked last week about value engineering programs for U5536. This is the GWR, the Great Wagon Road Project, the state of North Carolina has taken over from us. Last week, the state had requested that we bring, bring forth to the council three proposals for eliminating bike paths for the GWR. The GWR currently has bike paths running, I believe, on both sides of the road, the entire length, and that would be from the section of it near the coffee mill in that area of town, near the low shopping center, running the complete length down to its intersection in the future with Shallowford Road in the vicinity of the Food Lion Shopping Center. To summarize here, last week, council indicated that their feeling at that point was that they were not in favor of a proposal of any kind that eliminated bike lanes, and that they were interested in discussing things with the DOT at some point to potentially save, see if we could save the project some money. I did have a conversation with Connie James, who is my point of contact with Division Nine for the project. As it relates to the value engineering project, all they really need from us at the moment is up or down on any of the proposals that they submitted. We can discuss with them, even if it was other things that we may end up saving the state money for the GWR, that is not within the alternatives that they've submitted for us to give them an answer on. We need to go ahead and make a decision, one way or the other, on the three alternatives, on the, like the elimination of the bicycle lanes, and then at some point in the future, we can discuss other ways which the town could make changes with the DOT in order to save the project money. Lastly, Joyce, if you could get up the proposal or the document here, I want to cover a couple of more things that we need to for the DOT? No?
Nope.
I'm just trying to see.
Close current tab.
I hardly see it, that's why.
Okay, that's it. All right, what you've got right here, and Ms. James wanted to make sure that she, we were clear, and I'd asked her for a depiction of the multipurpose path beside the sidewalk. That is what's on the top. If you see outside on the right-hand side, there's a bike lane with somebody riding a bicycle, then right beside it is a five, the sidewalk, then you've got the roadway, and then you cross the road, and then you've got the 10-foot multipurpose path. That is their, their depiction of what that, that alternative would look like, just for your information. Now, if you go down a little further, next page here. All right, this is another recommendation that they went over and they'd like us to be okay with. I told them that I personally didn't see a big deal with this one. This is a crossover, which is right across the street from Conrad Circle. It's in the vicinity of the BP and the Col... It's in the vicinity of the BP and the Colts Cooling Area. That is a three-lane road with angle parking. What the request is, is to do with this similar to what we did with Tom Voss probably a year ago, where we eliminate the third center turn lane, reducing this down to two lanes instead of a three-lane profile. This will again save the town or save the DOT money on the project because it reduces the width of the road. What would happen is they do not project that the left-hand turns coming off of this, this road onto the GWR, I'm sorry, onto Shallowford will be that impaired because of traffic volumes that they have modeled for it. So, really, they want to know if the town is okay with treating this cross-section across from Conrad the same way we did with Tom Voss around a year ago. How does everyone feel about this?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. What would happen and I've talked through this with Connie James is I think we're adding about a five or six roundabouts to the downtown with this project. If somebody really did have a hard time where they wanted to make a left on it, what they would really end up doing is make a right, ride down to the intersection at Lewisville, Clemmons Road, go around the roundabout and come back again. So, there are plenty of roundabouts. So, if you can't make a left, you can make a right and then spin around, come back the opposite direction. So, we're good with this one? All right.
So, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
There would be no right turns?
There are right turns.
There are right turns. There's also left turns.
There is a, you will be able to turn either direction on this road. They're just wanting to eliminate the left-hand turn lane.
Gotcha. But you can still go either direction.
You can.
Fabulous.
All right. Now, next page, Joyce? Okay. If you see up on the, the intersections, see that's at Conrad Circle and then what is that second road? Getting blocked by a chair.
Tom Voss.
Tom Voss. These are T-intersections when they come into the, into the GWR. What they are wanting to do and what Connie did, if you see in these locations, inside these T-intersections, if you can see on the top of the, each of these drawings, there are little red lines drawn out from the curb line. Those are bump outs. And then she has written, drawn in here, hand-drawn, just crosswalks to cross the roads for, for the GWR as well as Tom Voss and Conrad. What the bump outs are for is to, one, act as a traffic mitigation measure that will cause traffic, traffic to slow down to, because the road narrows a little bit. It also is a safety aspect because it decreases the travel width that a pedestrian would have to go through to be able to cross the road before they're leaving vehicular traffic. And the reason she gave us the picture on the far right, and that is David McKee at Arrowleaf, is if you look at the top part of that road, I guess that's Shallowford Road, you see how the, right there at the intersection, there are literally bump outs that point south. Everybody see what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I'm following. Which one? Far right?
Far right picture.
Far right to the top.
There are bump outs that, that stick out on
Got it. Okay.
Right there. That is essentially what they're wanting to do at the T-intersections at those two that she's given us on the left-hand side, to go ahead and pull the curb line in to reduce the width of the road, thereby creating less distance that pedestrians have to cross the road and less chance that they're going to be in conflict with vehicles. I think this is a minor issue. They just want to make sure we're good with it. And I believe that's it. So, with that being said and those issues being handled, we need to go back to the issue of how we feel about their alternatives that they submitted for us to consider that would eliminate the bike lanes.
Council members, any, any concerns about the, the minor alterations that they're proposing? Before we go back to the?
Your recommendation is to go with it?
Yes, these.
Okay.
Hank, I still have the concern about, I mean, the whole idea with, with the Great Wagon Road is you would have an outbound bike lane and an inbound bike lane.
Yes.
So, what you're doing by eliminating one of them is you're basically going to have an outbound bike lane.
You would be eliminating both of them.
Oh, be eliminating both? Well, you have
No, no bike lanes inside the
Right, but you have the bike path.
You could.
Okay. So, you have the bikes go up on that back path going that way.
Mm-hmm.
But you're still pushing the bikes back down into the roadway coming this way. So, it seems like we're defeating
Well, the multipurpose path wouldn't be required to have, bikes go in either direction on the multipurpose path.
I guess the, instinctively, you ride with the flow of traffic. And so, what it would say, you'd have to have a real interesting training experience that, yeah, you can have bikes going different directions on a path. One of them, contrary to what we've been told, you want to ride with the flow of traffic and now you're riding against the flow of traffic. And I realize it's off and set off someplace.
Well, think about it as an old railroad bed that they've torn up that goes beside a, a road.
Right.
And they've turned those into multipurpose path. And that's just getting everything except for the people off of the highway. But a point that was made last week, most of our riders are professionals and they're going to stay to the road anyway.
Yeah.
What were you thinking? Because I think you're on to something with that.
Well, it's just, it's just ordinarily, if a rider is riding, they're riding with traffic and with traffic. So, now you're having him ride with traffic here on the multipurpose road, but you're asking him, these guys, to forget about going over here and riding like they always do, to come over here and ride in a two-way direction.
Right.
So, it's just, I think you're right, David. I think that they're going to ride on the road anyway.
And I did indicate the council's concerns with eliminating the bike lanes and Ms. James said that that was certainly understandable. They would write up the very obvious explanation that the town of Lewisville has been a bicycle destination for the county and this is just a part of what we are and what we want is a priority for the GWR and then we'll be done with it.
I'd like to
We are not any requirement to accept either, any of these alternatives.
I'd like to hear what Sergeant Stringer, safety-wise, comment on that.
How wide would the multipurpose path be?
We have one, one side that's 10 feet. They'd be increasing the sidewalk on the other side of the street by additional. So, we'd have 10-foot paths on both sides of the street. And then the other is to keep it like it is now on plan, which is a 10 on one side and a 5 on the other, and then adding an eight-foot asphalt multipurpose path in addition to that.
I think, just like what Mr. Smitherman spoke about, I think the majority of the riders are going to stay on the road because they're such as a fast-paced. I think the, the multipurpose path will be more designed for people using training wheels and your smaller kids. The example that kind of comes to mind for me is kind of like an example at the New River Park, where it is exactly that, the old riverbed. Me and my family ride up there and, and there's no, you meet people going both ways and, and most people that are riding like that are going to be very respectful. I don't think, I think your riders that you have in Lewisville that are passing through, I think they're just going to go around the, the road because there's, those bikes that they're riding on are typically not made to, to hit any kind of off-road. They're going to be roadway bikes. Just my opinion.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of keeping the bike lanes.
Okay.
I think we have a great community and it brings in individuals into our community that ride bikes at a more of a professional level versus more casual hanging out. So, I would be in favor of keeping the lanes on both sides. I agree.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. Agree.
Very good. That's unanimous.
Okay.
So, we're, keep, keep one the same and we'll go with you on the three others.
What?
We'll go with them on the three other suggestions that they want to do.
Okay. Got it. Now, make sure I understand what you're saying.
That's right. They didn't, they didn't bat a thousand, but they, they batted 750.
That's right.
But if they're willing to do that letter that you mentioned before on how we, our focus for this town is the bikes.
That, that'll be a part of the explanation in the write-up is why we, we chose to keep them is because of the, the nature of bicycling in this area. That's correct.
Correct.
And, and to remind everybody too, she asked me about it, even though she doesn't need it for tomorrow, she does want us to consider at some point whether or not we would be in favor of reverse back-end angled parking. So, that's something to keep in the back of your mind. So, I think we've got one down already around Reynolds High School. You've got a section there if you want to go down and try it out.
Say it again. Is it like double secret probation?
You go past the space and back into it.
Yeah. You go back, you drive past the space and then you back into the angled parking space.
I can see how that fly.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a future thing.
We call that, we have an outing, field trip.
And with that, that concludes what I've got.
Very good.
Any questions for Hank? Hank, I think we kind of glossed over upcoming events. What do we have happening?
Oh, well, we kind of talked about that last week when we did the concert on Saturday and then we've already closed Town Hall beginning of this week. I'm not aware, Joyce, we've got anything else for the month of July?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bon Jovi, do you think?
Yes. I don't have the, a list in front of me. Yes, go ahead.
On 7/17, there's going to be a concert. I don't have What? But we do have the concert.
It's Bon Jovi.
Slippery when wet.
Okay. Good. I'm just
It's a tribute to Bon Jovi.
Yep.
I'm just thinking of a song title.
Yeah. Keep rolling.
Okay. She knows them all. On 7/31, we're going to have another concert.
It's the Catalinas, 7/9.
On 8/6, we have movie night. On 8/14, there's
You're going to the movie?
Yeah. Go ahead and tell them.
It's Aladdin.
Okay. Oh, that's the new version too. I remember seeing that. On 8/14, we'll have another concert.
It's the British Invaders from 7 to 9.
8/28 concert.
Jukebox Rehab, and that'll be from 6 to 9. I know there's going to be an opening act, but we're not sure who it is yet.
On 9/11, another concert.
That's the Legacy Motown Review from 7 to 9.
Okay. Great. And on 9/25, I think that's our last or close to our last concert.
That's the Journey Tribute Band.
And that's all I have for right now. We just do two, two months in advance.
Nice tag team, guys. Worked out well.
You can tell who's right with the chicks.
Well, if, if, folks, please go to our website or go to our Facebook page. If you didn't catch the titles and the type of music that we're going to be presenting over the next couple of months, you've got some real diversity of music and some really great bands that I think will excite everybody. So, once, once again, tip of the hat to Stacy Howard for her organization of these on a very last-minute thing. Everybody was scrambling to get bands coming out of the pandemic and Stacy, Stacy did a really terrific job. Very good. Anything else, Hank?
No, sir. That's it.
Okay. Stacy, you have an update for us?
I just wanted to, over the last month or so, the, Kim Lee Horne, our consultant for our Lewisville Tomorrow Project, which is again for the public, our update to the comprehensive plan and then also an update to our master parks and rec plan, they've been working diligently with all the information that they have received. So, if I recall, there was a steering committee meeting on March 29th with 15 participants. On May 4th, there was a stakeholder meeting with 26 participants. And then there was, on May 11th, there was a public workshop with 45 participants. And then the biggest thing was our online survey. It was a huge hit. It was up for about three weeks, almost four weeks, and it reached 866 participants with almost 2,000 comments. So, there was quite a bit of, of information for them to go through. So, what they do is they, they present me with info sheets and the most recent one, they're finally getting together. I've just got a draft of it right now to go, that, that will go on our website on the Lewisville Tomorrow webpage that everybody will have a chance to look at. But I just kind of wanted to give you some highlights of that. So, the, a majority of the survey participants said they would like to see retail develop within established districts. Over half of the participants favored downtown Lewisville for prospective development. And overall, participants expressed a strong desire for greater mobility and recreation options, including greenways, bike lanes, which is good that we're keeping them, sidewalks, open space and scenic vistas. And then also, on the online survey, there were some major highlights and the top answers that kind of, kind of came out of that survey. Growth should be encouraged in a way that preserves the town's character. Our housing strategy should preserve what I like about my neighborhood. Our economic strategy should focus on providing the goods and services our residents need. In the future, Lewisville should limit traffic congestion where possible. And for Lewisville, quality of life means providing local events that bring Lewisville residents together. So, overall, I would say, in my personal opinion, I think Lewisville is, is continuing to do a great job and, and a lot of those, already the feedback that we've gotten from the process thus far. So, we are going to be having another steering committee on July 14th next week. But then I wanted to put a plug in, our next public workshop opportunity is going to be August 26th. We did take some feedback and changed the time from 6:30 to 8:30 to make it a little bit more accommodating for people who couldn't quite make it to a 5:30 to 7:30 timeframe. The location is to be determined mainly because we are really hoping that it can still be an in-person. So, we're, we've talked a little bit about where would be a good place for that. And so, we're possibly looking at Shallowford Square. I think that people might feel a little bit more comfortable if they're able to come to something like this in an outdoor setting, almost like we, we do with our events, to hopefully reach as many people as we can. So, we'll start getting information about that in the next, out into the public in the next week or so when we, we narrow down that location. So.
Very good.
Stacy, when will we be receiving the P and R, the Parks and Rec piece of the puzzle?
It will be this fall. The, we'll have that other public information meeting in August and that will kind of be the final wrap-up for them to put the final pieces together for the first draft of that actual master plan. So, we'll be receiving that in the fall.
So, that's still on schedule?
Yes.
As we intend it? Okay.
Any questions? Stacy? Very good. Thank you, Stacy. Hank, how about recapping our actions we took at our briefing?
Okay. Okay. First, we had a request from the Shallowford Foundation and we talked about that as far as their inclusion and then we took care of that action this evening. Then we also took action on Resolution 2021049 directing the clerk to investigate a satellite non-contiguous annexation petition. The request for the satellite annexation, it was approved to move forward with that request for 2675 Williams Road. And then we have Resolution 2021052 fixing the date for the public hearing of the requested satellite annexation for Thursday, July 15th, 2021. And last, we had a discussion on student leadership with a recommendation from staff to move forward with changes to the student leadership program.
Ladies and gentlemen, the, the council does meet, as you know, the first Thursday of every month for our briefing session. From time to time, we do take actions. When we take actions at that meeting, it's always good to report them out at this when all of you were watching on TV6. And this is the time that those in our audience have been waiting for, the time for the second public forum. Anybody who wishes to speak, please stand up, state your name. Hold your comments to three minutes. We can give you a little more tonight if you want that. I don't see anybody coming forward.[1708.04]
So thank you very much. Folks, again, at home, you can send your comments to townclerk@lewesvillenc.net, townclerk@lewesvillenc.net. And always, as always, we welcome your comments. Counsel, any discussion this evening that we need to take up before we go into closed session? Mr. Smithman?
I just want to say, I was very pleased with our event, July 4th, that we did on the 3rd. It was an awesome event. The music was great. Councilman Fred Franklin helped hand out flags and hats, and we had cupcakes, cookies, and it was an awesome event. And I was tired when it was over, but it was nice.
Yes, it was. It was a great, for those of you that want to see some pictures, go to our Facebook page, and you can see some pictures of that event. It was lots of fun for a lot of folks. Anything else, council members? Beau, would you tell us why we're going into closed session?
Yes, sir. This would be, the motion would be to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A6, which provides, allows the council to go into closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
Very good. This will be a closed session, ladies and gentlemen, but we do anticipate taking an action when we come out. I don't know how long a closed session would be, will be. It shouldn't be too, too long, but we will, we will take an action when we come out. So those of you who wish to stay with us, please do, but we're going to go ahead and go into closed session now if we have a motion, please.
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion?
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We'll be back in just a bit. We're now back in session. The purpose of the closed session was, as our attorney said, was to evaluate the performance of our manager. And over the last few months, an administrative group has been meeting with Hank. The administrative group includes myself, Jean Marie Foster, and Ken Sadler. And part of what we're talking about is his past performance and setting his performance goals for future years, or this future year coming up. It is a recommendation based upon council evaluations, summary of council evaluations, discussions of what we've had with Hank, that we give Hank a 1.25% salary increase effective July 1. That will make his salary $126,784.14, and that will be effective July 1. We're also extending him a five-year contract. His contract expired. It's kind of, it's kind of wonky. His contract expired in October, but because we want to get him back on a calendar year with all the rest of the staff, and if you're not completely confused by that, it's okay. We're trying to get him back in line with the same kind of staff evaluations, which are from a July 1 to a June 30, rather than his contract, which was a September, or October 1 to September 30, I believe is what it was before. So we've aligned his contract with the rest of the staff. That would make it a five-year contract effective July 1, 2021, and expiring June 30, 2026. That's the administrative group's recommendation to the council. And we do need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Smithman makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion?
Wasn't the contract.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's unanimous.
Was that cumulative to the recommendation for the salary and the contract, or?
That was both, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Although, do we need to do it separately?
No, they can be together.
Okay. Very good. And Hank, let me reflect generally the council's comments to you. Overall, I think the town's in really good shape. You're doing a good job for us, and we really appreciate all you're doing. We certainly had conversations about areas where we can identify things that you can improve on, but overall, I think I speak for the council when I say we really are pleased with the job you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that.
Very good. Council members, any additional comments? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion. Ms. Welch makes the second.
Okay. I didn't realize.
Further discussion?
I'm good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned. Thank you so much. If you're still out there with us, thank you, Smalls, for sticking with us. We hope to see you again next month.